Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Saginaw City Council. We will be led in prayer and pledge by Councilmember Michael Ball. Thank you.
In the name of God, the most gracious, the most compassionate, praise be to God, the Lord of the worlds. Please guide this city council and the city managers to do the will of this city and to make me do it and do it right and in good deeds. And please, Lord, please help our citizens to do the right thing. And please guide them. And please help us during this summer to make sure that we have a peaceful summer in the city of Saginaw. And please, Lord, bring some businesses here to help out our city. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our best wishes to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam clerk, please call the rule.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant and Councilmember Bench are both excused. Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Milne.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Oystash is excused. Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have six members present, three absent.
At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone again. Because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, this is a good time to remind everyone, as perhaps especially councilmembers, to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Thank you.
Mayor, do have some announcements. Yard waste collection is the same day as your regular trash day. And the materials must be in paper yard waste bags or in a 35-gallon or smaller trash can, not weighing more than 50 pounds, with the yard waste sticker on the front of that can. Stickers are available in the city clerk's office. Also, the city's waste convenience station is open to city residents the second Saturday of the month from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And it's located at the Public Works Building by using the entrance off of Highland Avenue. City residents may dispose of items such as building materials, recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. And the next collection day will be this Saturday, June 8. Also, the city manager has added an item to the consent agenda. It is item number 28, and it's regarding a third-party administration agreement with the ASU group. Next, Mayor, our order of business. Then we have a proclamation, and it's recognizing Yoko Mosner for her years of service as director of the Japanese Tea House and Cultural Center.
Thank you, Ms. Mosner. This is a privilege and an honor to be able to present this proclamation to you. So I will start as follows. City of Saginaw proclamation. Whereas, on behalf of the Saginaw City Council and the citizens of our city, it is a privilege to present this proclamation to Ms. Yoko Mosner for her dedication and commitment to the citizens of this community through the advancement of friendship and goodwill between the city of Saginaw and Tokushima, Japan. And whereas, Yoko was instrumental in creating the sister-city relationship between the city of Saginaw and Tokushima, Japan in 1961. Today, Yoko's commitment remains just as strong to this rich and mutually beneficial alliance. And whereas, the building of the Japanese Cultural Center and Tea House is largely attributed to Yoko's passion, drive, and commitment, Yoko Mosner has served on the Tea House Board since 1985 and has been the director since 1993. And whereas, in 2017, Yoko Mosner was awarded the Order of the Rising Sun Silver Raise, this honor is bestowed by the Emperor of Japan to an elite group of individuals who have made distinguished achievements to promote Japanese culture. And whereas, Yoko Mosner is known, not only in this region but around the world, for her invaluable contributions to promote the exchange of civic and culture understanding between cities and countries. And whereas, Yoko has been tireless in her efforts to promote Japanese culture here in our community, she has served a vital role for over 57 years. As a result of her passion, drive, and commitment, the Japanese Tea House and Cultural Center stands as a symbol of the special friendship and goodwill that Saginaw shares with Tokushima. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Floyd Clark, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmembers, do hereby extend this expression of our esteem, appreciation, and gratitude to Yoko Mosner for the positive impact she has made in our community over the past 57 years. We congratulate Ms. Mosner and extend our very best wishes for continued success in all her future endeavors. In witness whereof, I have her hand to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this third day of June in the year of our Lord, 2019. Signed, Floyd Clark. Mayor and Councilperson Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Milne, Bill Oystash, and Autumn L. Scherzer, with Timothy Morales, City Manager. Ms. Mosner. I'm very proud of you to give us. Now, if you would like, every councilmember would be happy to have a shake your hand, or you could certainly just give us the word of thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
It's your turn.
Nothing.
You're too little.
Thank you.
all the people from Tea House attending here tonight for me, thank you so much. I can't say anything.
[laughing]
But a long time I served, but it went fast. And I enjoyed it very much. And I came here in '57, and I did not live any other place but Saginaw. And I love it here. Saginaw is a very nice place. I think it's because of the people. So I want to thank you for all your support. I shouldn't have done this.
[laughing]
All I want is, I'll be retiring today, but if you would continue to support our effort for Tea House and sister-city relations just as much as you support me, thank you. Thank you so much. From all my heart.
Have the entire delegation, if you'd like, you're welcome to leave now or stay and enjoy the rest of the day. Councilmen, if you'd like.
[laughing]
Enjoy. Enjoy.
Well, we are at public hearings, Mayor. We're at public hearings.
Very good. Thank you.
Would you like to read the rules for the hearing?
Yes. The purpose of a public hearing is for the members of the public to address council as a whole, and for council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific action being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name, address, and your relationship to the subject of the public hearing. You've heard all these before, Tom, but we'll do it again. The first speaker will be considered the main presenter or designated representative, and you will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Other speakers will be limited to three minutes. Because public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions, speakers may only ask general questions for council's consideration, not questions directed to individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience. Having said that, welcome to the podium. Tom.
Our public hearing tonight is on the request to create an industrial development district at 1820 Hess Avenue.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, manager, councilmembers. That's a tough act to follow. But as you know, I'm Tom Miller with Saginaw Future. And typically, for the last several times, I've stood up here and gave my comments on OPRA's, the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act exemption. This is a little bit different, and it's exciting. This is an industrial development district, which is Public Act 198. If you recall, several years ago, Governor Snyder overhauled the industrial facilities tax law and reduced personal property taxes. But companies still pay taxes on real property. And so this is a 50% abatement on the real property, meaning the building. And you can probably guess who this is for. Tim Hausbeck is here for the company, so I'll be brief, so that Tim can tell you specifically about the project. I will say that Hausbeck Pickle, who's been in the city for a long time, will still continue to pay their existing taxes. And just like OPRA's, this will, this new project will go on a separate tax roll. So it's separate from the capped ad valorem roll. And so it will allow the city to collect 50% of the taxes on the new project, which will be a new revenue generating stream for the city. This is an exciting project. We've worked with Tim and his family on a number of projects, and I'll have him come up here and give some comments about the project specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, city manager, and city attorney. As Tom mentioned, I'm Tim Hausbeck, President and CEO of Hausbeck Pickle Company. Like Ms. Mosner, we're very proudful to be here and be a part of our city, this great city. Those of you who were at the Saginaw Chamber of Commerce annual meeting, I hope most of you attended were able to pick up a "We Love Saginaw" sticker that I created. And if you needed more, they're available at the Chamber of Commerce. This project is an addition of warehousing space, and primarily both for produce storage. We have a lot of trucks that come in every day. We're expanding our produce operation, and we need cold storage for that product. Right now, we do not have any, and we run risk of spoilage in the summertime when our lines aren't running at the efficiencies they're supposed to. Right now, we've been renting space off-site. We expanded this operation back in 2005 on Hess Avenue. It was, we were fortunate that when we found this property, that it was already zoned to have a pickle company when we were looking for a new home, because Heinz Pickle Company had an operation at the far eastern end of Hess Avenue. It was nice, because we have almost four city blocks. We were able to create a master plan. There was already an existing building, a tool and die shop called Galladay Tool. And we redeveloped that site and then started adding on one phase at a time. We wish we could have done this project eight years ago, but we couldn't afford it. We're in a better position now with lower debt, and it's time to now to bring everything under one roof to help reduce our overall costs and keep us in business for another generation. Any questions or comments?
I got a comment. It's not a question and comment period, but I will ask if there are any objections or comments to the industrial development district at 1820 Hess Avenue. Are there any objections or comments? Third and last time, are there any objections or comments? Hearing none, madam, we would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved in Saginaw. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. We're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Our next order of business is public input.
All right. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit. At this time, with the clerk, so we are sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will refer to city staff. Thank you. Madam clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Eric Carbin.
Welcome back.
Thank you. My name's Eric Carbin, living at 1003 Mackinac. I'm speaking on behalf of me. At the council meeting on May 20, the city manager commented regarding the award appearing in the proposed budget document. He suggested there is nothing wrong with that. He stated, "The previous year's award goes in the next year's budget." This general statement does not explain to me why the award for fiscal year 2018 would go in the budget document for fiscal year 2020. To me, if the next year is fiscal year 2020, then the previous year is fiscal year 2019. I received a copy of the OMB Director's memo to the manager. Her memo also suggests incorrectly that the fiscal year 2018 is the fiscal year previous to fiscal year 2020. The question I raised on May 2019 at the public hearing on the proposed budget was, "Did Saginaw receive the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2018?" At that meeting, the manager, in effect, said yes, despite the fact that the award in the proposed budget document says fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017. In her memo to the manager, the OMB Director stated that it was shortly after the proposed budget document was submitted to council that the city was notified that it received the GFOA award for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. It may well be that Saginaw has, in fact, received the award for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. However, the GFOA website does not confirm this fact at this time. In the 10 or 11 consecutive years that Saginaw has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, never have the annual budget documents for two different fiscal years contained the same award for the same fiscal year, except in the case of the budget documents for fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020, both of which show the award for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017. I'll close with this. If the GFOA notified the city shortly after the proposed budget was submitted to the council on April 29, 2019, that Saginaw had received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, why wasn't that award shown in the proposed budget document? The city had apparently some two to three weeks to make the appropriate change in the proposed document before the council adopted the budget on May 20, 2019. That's it for me. I've got a copy here in case the...
Budget Director wants to see it. Thank you. Madam clerk?
Our next speaker is Trevor Mahadeo. Do not see him. And we also have a speaker of Kenny Mahadeo. And he's not here. That takes us to remarks of council.
Okay. Thank you. Today, we start with Councilmember Balls.
I don't have any comments today, sir. No more than, we're talking to the choir here. But just hope that Saginaw be a lot more safer than it normally is during the summer. If we can do anything as citizens, just please get out and talk to our neighbors and report any crimes or anything like that that need to be reported, so we can have a safe Saginaw this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Ball. Excuse me. Councilmember Milne.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I want to begin tonight with a special opportunity for a ride-along I had a couple Fridays ago. I was able to go up in Trooper 3, the state police patrol helicopter that patrols Saginaw two days a week and Flint two days a week. Chief Ruth helped arrange this, and Lieutenant Brian McComb from the state police post. My hosts were Sergeant Zins is the pilot, and his observer is Trooper Cole Martin. And I just want to let everyone know what a special help this can be to the city here. The chopper patrols for two, two-and-a-half-hour patrols every night it's working here. And it has the ability to be anywhere in this city within 90 seconds. They can use their onboard camera and be miles away and focus in on a situation we have on the ground. They assist ground units. They can call ground units in. And the cost of this, which is not a direct cost to the city, which we get through our partnership with the state police, the hourly operating cost, including fuel for this helicopter, is over $600 an hour. And we receive the benefit of five hours a night of patrol of that. And I can't say enough about the troopers who fly in that. A two-and-a-half-hour stretch in the air, it has no ability to get out and stretch your legs like a ground patrol, except as the pilot told me, once. So they are very dedicated to their work. They waited a long time to get the opportunity to fly in this helicopter. And they, while they're patrolling the Saginaw skies, they can be called as far away as the Straits of Mackinac. So they told me before we went up, it was possible we'd get called away, and I could have a very long night. But they gave us a special extra patrol, so they were up both nights that we had proms for both high schools. So just want to thank them and the assist from the state police on that. I know Chief Ruth values it highly, that they come fly with us. I wanted to mention briefly the tragedy that we recently saw unfold in Virginia Beach. And it was a sad reminder of why often when we open our meeting with a prayer, we pray for the safety of our workers and our citizens here in Saginaw. Also, the flags flying at half-staff here remind us of that possibility. And folks like I just mentioned work to keep that from happening here. Number of members of council were able to attend an historic first performance of a Cirque du Soleil on ice at the Civic Center, Crystal. So that's my comments.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give out some congratulations. CAPALSI, Saginaw Alumni Chapter, had their all-mens health fair on Saturday, which was very well-attended. And I just, it's great to have organizations in the community that are promoting the health and wellness of family members, not just the men, but also women were there. So congratulations to them. Some community, a lot, I would be remiss if I didn't say that Mayor Pro Tem had a birthday last week, and we were able to celebrate with her. So it was a very fun night. And happy birthday to you, Mayor Pro Tem. Some events coming up this week. We do have Jazz on Jefferson this week, so hopefully we see some city councilmembers out there. I'm sure I'll see you. And Friday, we have the National Panhellenic Council is having their Chocolate After Dark at the Castle Museum. So come on out and have some chocolate desserts. Break your diet for the day. It's okay. I also want to say congratulations, and hopefully, Van Leeu, Chief Van Leeu, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Lieutenant Maldonado retired after 22 years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So congratulations to Lieutenant Maldonado, and thank you for your years of service with the Saginaw Fire Department. And then lastly, I'd like to mirror, it's getting warmer outside, and we've had a few shootings. So I want to also say and acknowledge, Sparkle Robey, she had the take-a-step walk on Saturday to stop the violence. She had a march, and they marched down Genesee Avenue. So just want to give acknowledgement to her and just remind our community associations and all of us that are residents of the city to just keep an eye out in your community and get more involved. Or, you know, it just takes one step, one voice, one person to make a difference. Because we want to, even though the homicides and shootings are down from last year, we want to make sure they stay down. And Chief Ruth is nodding his head in the back. So we can all do something to make it a little better. Other than that, see everyone in Jazz and Jefferson. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank our public speaker. I'm sure that the city manager will get back to you with an answer. I've got three things I want to talk about. One, next Wednesday is Light Up the City. And I think it would be a good idea, city councilmembers, if we had a table. And so I'm asking for your support, because we need to represent. Most of us are there anyways. So we just need to be at a table so that people that don't know us, know us. So if you can, we're going to have a table at Light Up the City. Thanking the city for birthday wishes. Thanking the city for all the support that they give me throughout the year. And then my last, I have a request for the city attorney, too. I'm requesting that she prepare an opinion update for city councilman on the status of where we are with the recreational marijuana facility, so that we can possibly go into a closed session at a later date. We know that the time is nearing, and so we're going to have to make a conscious decision. So I'm asking if she can do that. On Monday, June 10, at CAC, they're going to have the annual celebration the Saginaw Foundation does. It is from 5:30 to 8:00. All are invited. It's a free activity. It is really, we want to talk about a picnic. They got a table clause. It is a really nice affair. It's catered. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's catered from Horizon. So if you like Horizon food, like I do, you should be there. Okay? Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Councilmember Forbes.
So I'd just like to thank Ms. Yoko, although she already has out, for her many years of service to Saginaw. I was lucky enough to attend a tea ceremony a couple of years ago with my Leadership Saginaw class. And we were just so lucky to have such an incredible cultural experience right here in Saginaw available to us at the Japanese Tea Hall. And that is definitely thanks to Ms. Yoko. I'm a part of a community arts group called The Great Mural Project. We installed our first mural on the building on the corner of Genesee and Washington last year. And I'm happy to say that we start painting our second installation later this week, which will be installed on the north side of the Fralias Building in Old Town. So we're really excited to work with a new Saginaw artist and some students from our local schools to put together that mural. And so we are looking for an installation later in the summer, and it will coordinate with a movie for, launch our film festival. So we're excited to get going on that and start raising money for our one next year. So, and that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm just going to reiterate Mayor Pro Tem's request for a table at Jubilee Island. I think that's a great idea. I would ask all councilmembers to try and be there. We can rotate at the table and mix with the crowd and, you know, as we go through the evening. But being there would be good. We can have some information about city activities, schedules, a number of different things we can discuss with the public. And it's a great opportunity, as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, to get to be known by your public. The Also Jazz on Jefferson, be there or be square. It's a great event. And I think that's all I'm going to cover. Well, no, I apologize. There's one more thing. And that is, the Saginaw Symphony had its last concert. It's passed out, and it was tremendous. And they already have their new program out for the coming year. And I'd invite anyone who has, who has...
communities program, Friday, June 28th, at the SVRC Marketplace at 11:00 a.m. After working towards certification over the past few years, Saginaw has succeeded in accomplishing the requirements laid out in RRC best practices. State and local leaders and business developers will be on hand to help celebrate this achievement. Yolanda Jones and her team worked very hard on the accomplishment, and they should be commended. So, Yolanda, Saginaw Future, John Stempel, and a lot of the other city staff that worked on this. Only 33 communities in the state of Michigan are certified, and the only other community in our eight-county region is Mount Pleasant. So, that is a pretty big deal. Congratulations on them. If you go to the MEDC website, you can see all of the communities that are certified, and many that are much larger and have a lot more resources than Saginaw does are not certified. So, good job by Yolanda and her team. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Okay, madam clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Any exceptions? Remember, there's 20, there's an additional one added, as mentioned by the clerk earlier. Any exceptions? Hearing none? Is there a motion to approve the items 1 through 28?
Some move.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam clerk?
Here we are now at Board and Commission and Committee Reports.
Are there any reports of city boards and commissions from any councilmember? Any reports? None? Madam clerk?
We are at Appointment of Boards and Commission Members.
There are three. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk to the three appointments? Hearing none? Is there a motion to approve all three?
Some move.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam clerk?
We are at Resolutions, Mayor. Our first one is to recognize Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's supported by Councilmember Walls. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Next?
Our last resolution tonight is to create an industrial development district at 1820 Hess Avenue.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Next?
We are now at miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business or comments?
I just wanted to comment on Hausbeck's pickle. I, you know, for them to move in Saginaw and move their storage facility here from out of Bridgeport is the one we ran for Saginaw, and not only that, I think it was a year and a half, two, maybe two or three years ago, he even had an incentive of his employees to move into the city of Saginaw.
He did.
You know, so we need to have people like that in our community want to help us out, so we need to help them out as much as possible.
I agree. Very good.
I just wanted to mention that.
Any other unfinished business? Anybody? All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Move and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, yeah.